Good afternoon, we're here for the work session of the Nushrona County Commissioners. It is Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, one thirty P M. Our first appointment is with Lily Barkow, Tyler Harris from Wyoming D E Q Groundwater Division. The purpose is Casper Carbon Capture Geological Sequestration Permit Application. Welcome.
Thank you Commissioners, my name is Lily Barkow. I'm the Groundwater Section Manager in the Water Quality Division of the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. We appreciate this opportunity to come and discuss the Water Quality Division's Class Six Program or Underground Injection Control and Geological Sequestration for our project that is outside of Casper. And I've brought with me today Tyler Harris, who is the Geology Supervisor of the U I C Class Six Program. So we're going to give you an overview of the EPA U I C Program and the state primacy that we have, primarily focused on the Wyoming's Underground Injection Control Program, what primacy means for the state, and carbon capture utilization and storage that this project is focused on, and our permitting process and current applications that are in the state. So the U I C EPA Program is under Section fourteen twenty-one of the Safe Drinking Water Act. States can receive primacy of this program to basically become the federal program to address underground injection control programs. Currently thirty-four states have primacy over certain classes of wells. Wyoming received primacy of these Class One through Five wells in nineteen eighty-three, and Class One is very comparable to Class Six. So Wyoming started looking at geological sequestration in two thousand and eight. And so, once federal rules came out in regards to Class Six, it was a natural process to bring that into our program as well. So we received primacy of those geologic sequestration wells in two thousand and twenty. We are also the second state to receive primacy of those wells. North Dakota was the first. Here at the D E Q, the Water Quality Division, we oversee Class One deep hazardous and non-hazardous disposal wells, Class Five non-hazardous injection wells. Very similar or most common are large capacity septic systems that inject greater than two thousand gallons per day and any other kind of wells, geothermal, heat pumps and so forth. And then, of course, our Class Six wells. Our Land Quality Division oversees Class Three, which is our in situ uranium mining wells. And then, the Oil and Gas Commission will oversee Class Two production, oil and gas disposal wells. So why primacy is often a question that we receive? Why not continue to have this managed by the EPA? There's currently the ten regions that are overseen by EPA. There are currently seventy-six Class Six permits within the various regions. And so, they don't have a lot of staff and time to address these Class Six wells. And without primacy, EPA Region Eight would oversee the permitting, inspection, operation, and closure of those Class Six wells in Wyoming. And Wyoming would not have a say in the operation of those wells. The main thing is Wyoming knows Wyoming. We have staff that have attended the University of Wyoming. We have the background of primacy and operations and permitting of the Class One and through Five wells since nineteen eighty-three. We're well-versed in the geology. We work with the Wyoming Geological Survey as well as the Oil and Gas Commission. We have the statutes and regulations in place for the permitting that was developed starting in two thousand and eight. And permits can be issued a lot quicker when they come from dedicated staff that knows the Wyoming communities and geology. EPA permits can take anywhere between two and five years or even longer to get issued, whereas Wyoming can issue these permits in one year or less, depending on the condition of that application submitted. As I mentioned, there are a number of statutes in place as to who owns the pore space, who, the title of the CO2 that's injected, permitting procedures and practices. We have the rules set in place for receiving those permits. We also have unitization of those storage interests that's managed through our Oil and Gas Commission. Project completion, release and transfer, so that long-term stewardship, an opportunity for companies that have conducted the permitting activities in a responsible manner and in accordance to state rules and regulations, that those, the long-term stewardship would be managed by the state. And we have a way of collecting injection fees, and those are managed through our Chapter Twenty-nine Special Revenue Account. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Tyler to speak more about the permitting process and the Casper permits.
Thank you Lily. And so, this diagram here, excuse me, shows kind of the carbon capture utilization and storage process as a whole. Number one up there is the capture of the CO2 at the source. Number two is the transport. Three is utilization, and this would be covered more with the Oil and Gas Commission as an enhanced oil recovery. And we focus on number four, the permanent storage in geologic layers thousands of feet below ground. So these are, this is a map of our current Class Six well applications in the state. You can see there's three, it's kind of tough to see on this scale, but there are three Class Six wells proposed in the southwest corner, six proposed in the southeast corner, two up near Gillette. Those are currently permitted as Class One wells that will be converted to Class Six. And then, the one I'm sure you're more interested in is the Casper Carbon Capture Number One Well that would be right outside of Casper. So to start big picture, our permitting process, this is a flow chart of our entire process from start to finish. And we did color code it so that the green is, any green box is the operator or applicant's responsibility. The yellow are D E Q Class Six's responsibility. So it starts with the applicant doing site screening, deciding on an area for a project.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Is this, I haven't seen Michelle here, is this in our packet? So some of these slides, so because this is a public meeting, typically if it's on the screen, it's part of our packets, so the public has some idea. We are now live streaming and we're kind of proud of doing that for the public. So I'm a little bit, you know, I wish we had it in our packet, but I know this slide in particular, I'd like to get a copy of. Can we have that made? I don't know if you have extra copies with you now?
Yeah, I don't know if we have copies with us now, but we can definitely get you guys copies of this.
It is, it is.
Yeah, well, not part, yeah.
Go until you're over, and it's under final, twenty twenty-four, nineteen seventeen.
Great, so we do have it, I appreciate it.
Good.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So yeah, starting from the beginning, the applicant will start with basically a feasibility screening for an area and then come meet with us for a very high-level informational meeting, just so we have an awareness of the project, the area, you know, details aren't fully nailed down yet. At that point, they start working more on the application itself. And then, when they're ready to submit that actual application, they need to come in and have a pre-application meeting with us forty-five days in advance of submission of that application. And that's for us to get all of our staffing ducks in a row and our accounting in a row. Then, once the application is submitted, we have a sixty-day deadline to complete a technical and completeness review of that application. During that time, at the end of that sixty days, any comments that D E Q has on that application will be sent to the operator. And this starts kind of an iterative process of, we send them comments, they respond, and we do that as many times as it takes until we can agree on a complete permit application. At that point, the, a draft permit is drafted and sent out for a public notice period that is sixty days, sixty-day notice period, at the end of which we also hold a public hearing just to ensure that any additional comments would be captured. At the end of that hearing, that ends the notice period, any public comments that were received will be reviewed by D E Q and responded to, and then the permit to construct will be issued. After that, that permit to construct is just that, it's for the construction of the injection well and potentially monitoring wells and testing to collect site-specific data for that project. That data is then used to, by the applicant to submit a modification application to that permit. And then, a similar process, they submit that to us, we review. And once that can be finalized, the draft modified permit would go out for another sixty-day public comment period. We would hold another hearing, and then, at the end of that hearing, the modified permit that allows injection would be issued to the applicant. At that time, if unitization is required, we cannot issue the authorization to inject until the Oil and Gas Commission has issued their unitization order.
Looking at this, is this carbon CO2 supposed to be coming from Dave Johnson then? Or where is it coming from?
For this project specifically, I am not positive yet. That was one of my comments to them. I believe they will be working with a direct air capture facility.
Why?
That is a question you would have to ask the applicant.
Okay.
I have a question too, Mr. Chairman. So the way I understand this is we're taking it out of the air and putting it underground. And I like the idea that it gets in our air because it blows it away. You put it in our ground, it's going to be here forever probably. Am I right in that simplification?
Well, I suppose yes, the, the purpose of the deep geologic sequestration is to hold it underground permanently, deep enough to where it cannot make its way back to the surface.
But sometimes it does. Sometimes it gets out and it can hurt people and cause problems.
There is potential risk for that, but it's.
Well, it's happened in the past and other areas.
Commissioner, so these are formations that will be ten to fourteen or more thousand feet below ground surface, and there's rather thick confining layers in between of impermeable rock that occurs. Unless there's other penetrations like oil and gas wells, we would evaluate those to make sure that there aren't conduits to release to the surface. We're also targeting very saline or brackish water that when combined with the CO2 will either mineralize or dissolve that CO2. So if you think of like the ocean as this carbon storage formation, the ocean is constantly absorbing CO2, and that's how the.
Let me get you back to Nushrona County, we don't have any oceans here.
It was an example.
What happens if this gets in somebody's water supply? Some rancher gets into his waters, what happens then?
There are requirements as part of the permit to shut in the well and do an investigation and reclamation and remediation to address that issue.
What does he do if he shut down his well? What does he do for water?
No, no, the injection well, so that they can do the investigation to address the concerns of that private well owner.
What happens?
They would have to remediate that well. But the process that we have in place and the review process before a permit can even be issued has to demonstrate that the CO2 will stay where it's being permitted to stay.
Sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't stay, right? It's come out before and it's, one city had to be evacuated over it.
I'm not familiar, I believe that situation was a CO2 pipeline possibly. I would have to do some research to, because I'm not aware of that.
I Googled it the last time they were in here, and it said they had to evacuate the whole city. I'm just concerned about it contaminating some rancher's water or whoever is living out there contaminated their water, doesn't seem like going down that depth. But let me ask you this, is this the states, the state is the one who decides this? The Commissioners have no authority to stop this or approve it or anything, is that true?
That's why we're here today, to discuss this and show our process. There are opportunities for the Commissioners to submit comments to us. All of our applications are available online.
If we voted to stop it, that we didn't want it, could we do that?
I'm not sure, I will have to get that information on how that works specifically.
Just from what I'm seeing, I don't see here where the Commissioners say, ah, we don't want this in our county, it's dangerous. We don't want to have this out there because there's ranchers with deep wells and that kind of thing, and we don't want to risk it. Because I do know that this kind of thing escapes and has escaped and can be a problem. And I also am wondering if it's the state that has the final say-so on it. This is just kind of a nice thing for you to do to give us information, because you're going to do it anyway. Is that true?
There, I believe the process for the Commissioners to be involved with is part of the industrial siding permit, permitting process, just because of the scale of the project, they would have to get the appropriate permits through the Industrial Siding Commission.
Is this a jurisdictional permit?
That I don't know yet.
You know what the size of the jurisdictional, the trigger is on that? Is it like two hundred and twenty million or something? So has this project, has this project been deemed to be in excess of that?
I would have to find that information out.
So if there's no I S D or I S C process through the state of Wyoming, then there really, I think to Commissioner Laird's question, there really is no ability for this commission to do anything, so this is more of just a courtesy call?
I will get that information for you. I'm sure there's a process or something in place to incorporate you into the process.
When is the comment period, when does it end?
The comment period will not start until the draft permit has been drafted. So at this point, we have received an application for the project in Nushrona County.
Right, and you've sent them back comments, can we get a copy of those comments that the D E Q sent to the applicant?
Those will all be public once the review period is complete.
Why aren't they not, why are they not able to be shared with this commission earlier than that?
We will look through that process, we typically don't share them.
Is it a public record or is there?
It can be attained through the public records request.
So you're going to make the commission do a public record.
I am not making the commission do that, I just have to speak to the administrator to make sure to get this to you through the proper channels.
Well, I think there are significant concerns that I've heard from people on the Hat Six Road. There's a subdivision out there called the Goose Creek Subdivision. There's other residential properties in that area. There's a landowner that's right across and I think just right adjacent to the plume. So I think we're very concerned, at least some of the Commissioners are very concerned about the scientific and the geological information that are going to ensure that the sequestration is limited to the lands of the participants, Falls Ranch in particular. They're participating in the whole project, they're not just a landowner. And so, what I would like to see or monitor wells on the periphery of this thing, is that something you guys can require?
Yes.
Is that something you intend to require?
Yes.
What is the spacing of those monitoring wells?
That is still under consideration as we're still verifying that their modeling is, the modeling of the CO2 plume is going to be where they say it's going to be. So then, we will base the monitor well locations off of where that plume is supposed to be to ensure that it is staying within those, that boundary.
Well, I don't think that the public of Nushrona County in general has a really good warm fuzzy feeling about the protections of the state of Wyoming, whether it's the D E Q or the Board of Land Commissioners. And I'm referring to, I'm alluding to a gravel pit application and a gravel lease on some state land. There's currently litigation in front of the Wyoming Supreme Court pertaining to state control versus local control. So I think you guys need to do everything in your power to make sure that the people of Nushrona County are protected. And when I hear you say this is our project, makes it sound like this is the D E Q's project. And my understanding is the D E Q is not a participant, is not an owner of, one of the co-owners of this project, is that right?
We are not an owner in any way of this project.
Why is it our project? When you're saying it's our project?
Well, if I did say our project, I.
No, it was Lily that said our project.
I'm sorry, I say our project, meaning that it, right now it's under us for review for the application, and it's our particular project that we're reviewing, not the project overall. We're not part of the company or the landowners. We're strictly, our role is to protect underground sources of drinking water, and we're reviewing those permits to make sure that they are protective of underground sources of drinking water and public health and the environment.
You said ten thousand to fourteen thousand feet, I see in one of your slides later on that this is six thousand.
This, yes, this project would be at roughly six thousand feet. This, those depths are approximate at this point. Once a monitor well or a well is drilled, if it were to be, if this permit is issued, the well could be drilled and data could be collected to verify those depths.
So the concern for me is, I know landowners and we're a landowner with Madison Formation water wells of six, seven thousand feet. The fact that there isn't one in the periphery doesn't mean that there won't be one in the future. And frankly, I think it's a taking if you condemn land so that the neighbor, the neighboring lending owner can't drill that six or seven thousand foot deep water well, which can be a game changer because of the quantity of that water. So I know there's a permitting process for that too. Is that going to be impeded or restricted or prohibited by the adjacent landowners or on the adjacent?
No, that water well permitting process should not be affected at all by this project.
Thanks.
So Mr. Chairman, my comment here is, is that I don't think this is in the best interest of our county. I think that the way the Wyoming wind removes this, to be starting now to inject it in very close to this town when it could escape and the possibilities that it's going to infect the water, I don't think there's a person in this county that'd vote for that if it was on the ballot. So I want to make a comment personally, as a Commissioner, I'm against doing this because I don't think it's helpful to our people here. And you're talking about the D E Q and the water, you've got this issue up on Casper Mountain, which maybe have already dealt with about the water up there. There's people up there with four-foot-deep artesian wells, and the guy doing the gravelling says he's going to go down twenty-five feet. Now, if he does that, is that going to wipe out their artesian well? Because if that hasn't been considered by D E Q, I hope you go back and have him take a look at that. Because there's things going on in Nushrona County right now that isn't helpful for our people. And then, when I hear this coming in, you guys don't live here. You're doing whatever you're doing because of your job. I'm doing what I'm doing because of my job, which is I represent the people of this county. And you haven't said anything to me that would make me think this process is helpful to our county or our state. This is some governmental takeover that, yeah, you're going to go through all of these routines just like they always do, and half the public won't even know what they mean. And then, it's going to be approved, and then, when it all escapes, oh, it's not our fault, it's somebody else's fault. Just like the one that did where, I've been telling people, if they do this and you're getting lightheaded and dizzy and you go out and get in your car and it won't start, it's because it's leaking. It's taking the oxygen out of the air, and somehow you're going to have to get the heck out of there. So I don't like that. Right now, the wind blows it away. But you get the gravel pit up here, the wind's going to blow that dirt all over the place too. The thing I'm worried about there is going down, going down twenty-five feet. Now that you're from the D E Q, what happens to these people's artesian wells when they can't flush their toilet the next morning? What do I tell them? The D E Q took care of you? So far, I haven't seen that. That's my feeling, that's my comment.
Mr. Chairman, don't take this personally because that's not what it meant. At one time in my life, I did work for one of the state agencies, and I understand you guys have a job to do, but I have real concerns about an atmospheric removal. The amount of carbon dioxide that we have in our atmosphere in this climate is minimal. If one oak wants to do this, why aren't they doing it down next to their plant in Commerce County? Those are my concerns. If you're worried about sequestration and taking carbon dioxide and not putting it back into the atmosphere, we don't need to take it out of the atmosphere in this climate. That helps us breathe. We don't have enough oxygen as it is. And CO2 is one of the main contributors to plant life and what supports that. I've got a biological background, so I'm speaking from that side of things. I'm not going to go into a lot of great detail, but I understand that very well. Taking carbon dioxide out of the air in an area like this where we have very minimal additional carbon dioxide that's put into the air, doesn't make any sense. If you want to take it out, you know, in your slide, you show that it comes from the plant. If you want to take it from the plant, move this thing down to Commerce County where they have, one oak has a plant down there where they're burning off stuff, and take it out of that stack and do it that way. If that's really what you want to do. Personally, I don't think CO2 is a pollutant. I don't care what the EPA says, and I don't care what they declared it as being because the amount of CO2 that we actually have in our atmosphere is less than one percent, it's minimal. And it's required for plants to grow. For those of us who actually grow plants, the more CO2 you can have, the better your plants survive. I mean, they put CO2 in greenhouses to enhance that, and we're taking it away up here? That doesn't make any sense, not out of the atmosphere. So like I said, I understand, I understand what you guys' position is. So don't misunderstand that. But I think this is bad science. I think it's, I think it's a touchy-feely thing that doesn't make any difference at all, that doesn't help us at all. And I think it's, I think it's a hazard to our citizens. I think it's ridiculous, and I think it's just a waste of money and a waste of your time as much as anything else. And I mean that diplomatically, I'm not saying that facetiously. I really do think that a lot of this stuff that we're going through is a. is a waste of time.
Thank you, commissioners. I really appreciate the comments and I, I what's in regards to the, the gravel pits, that's under the land quality division, I have not seen any pits or any permits in regards to the, the groundwater. I have not heard from the state engineer's office in regards to any de-watering or removal activities or any permitting on their part. State engineer's office handles all of the water quantity issues. And I oversee the water quality issues. And unfortunately, at this time, I have not received a permit. Or I would be able to address that, that issue a little bit further in regards to the gravel. In regards to climate change or anything, whether it's my own personal opinion or not, I have a permitting process. Where they get the CO2 from, I do not have a say in that. It is a purity of the CO2 that we are looking for that then makes it applicable to the Class Six program. If it's more of used for enhanced oil recovery or has significant impurities to that CO2 stream, that would not be a Class Six well. At this point, we've only received an application and there's no guarantee that we would issue a permit at this time. So those are part of the, the processes for us to do those reviews. And this is why I get out to meet with the county commissioners to hear of those concerns because whether there's appropriate outreach that has been out here, I can only speak to the permitting process, but the research and everything. I would be happy to get you in touch with the School of Energy Resources. And then if there's business specific questions regarding why direct air capture versus the coal plants, you know, that, that would be a business decision with the company. So I certainly am listening and I subject myself and my staff to come to present this information so that we can hear these concerns as well. But our primary focus is and will continue to be protection of underground sources of drinking water and the, the health and the environment. And so we would like to present to you and to continue to show we have a robust permitting process. We also have a robust community, public involvement process. And unfortunately, I do not know the, the working matrix of bringing the commissioners in for decision-making. That is something that I'm willing to find out though.
Commissioner.
Thank you for coming. Moving past that, just looking through your presentation and all that. Do you have any information on their actual proposed well construction? The cementation, the casing, the et cetera, et cetera, how it's developed and the zone isolation?
Yeah, so I don't have it in here, but that was part of the application that was submitted, which is available on our website.
Okay.
And I can get you a copy of that.
Would you? I'd appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
That, that's kind of where I would like to look at a little bit. The other thing, just kind of a side question out of curiosity and maybe you guys looked at this while you're going through the, the looking at the plume and everything, as it's being injected, the, the formation down there and the plumes growing, what, what kind of rates are we looking at as far as the rate of expansion, pressurization, all that?
I, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the rate they had. Like a daily rate, the total was, yeah, 6 million metric tons over 15 years.
Yeah. I'm just kind of curious whether that, those monitoring wells will be able to give you, I mean, they'll give you a lag indication that that plume's expanding beyond expected boundaries, but what, what are you thinking you're going to see as an expansion?
Well, so.
Delay are we going to be?
With those monitor wells on the perimeter, you would see a rise in pressure before the CO2 plume ever got there.
Right. That's kind of what I'm, what I'm meaning is I was looking for pressure, you know, pressure.
Oh, lag from, okay, thank you. At this point, I couldn't say for sure on a rate on that. There's just not enough information with this application yet. Like I said, this application was reviewed and comments were submitted to the operator.
You go, a fairly, you should have somewhat of an idea through your formation analysis though with the gamma rate.
Yes, but off the top of my head, I do not.
No, no, I'm not asking. But that data would be available at a later date or?
Yes.
We'll figure it out.
Yes, that data will be available.
And then just a curiosity question for me is when you're looking at these projects as a, as a state reviewer and whatnot, is there any any way you guys can encourage more of a remote development rather than closer into the MPOs and stuff like that? I mean, we've got a ton of properties out there that there's just nothing but sagebrush and scrub out in the middle of nowhere. I know it's inconvenient for the developer, but you don't have these issues.
Right. I understand that. From our end of that, it's the, the applicant does their feasibility study in their area. They choose that area. We review it to tell them, yes, it can work here, or these are the issues you will have to address here.
So, so can I go, we'll go ahead and finish, but I want to jump in on that point.
Um, just to, in short, we can't say, don't do it here, you need to move over here. That's along, more along the lines of their business process. If that helps.
Yep.
You know, and, and I think what bothers me the most about this is that this is a residential area where the highest and best use is future residential. Falls Ranch has some real trophy land to the south of here. Where there isn't any residences in, in the neighborhood. Now, I know it's all about geology. I get that. But I'm not hearing anything that's making me feel any good when you say essentially, and, and what my understanding now is, at, at this point at least, is that the Natrona County Board of County Commissioners has no authority or jurisdiction to watch over the self, health, safety and welfare of our public. And you're not doing that either, except with respect to water contamination issues. But in terms of whether it's a suitable location, it sounds like that's not part of your regulatory or statutory scheme. Well, hang, hang on, because I, I, I think that if, for the, to the extent that this is being watched by anybody, I think that they'd like to hear your response.
So as part of that application review, they have to do a full geologic site characterization of their project area. So that is the first thing that we review is, is this site suitable for sequestration?
From, from a geologic perspective, not from a land ownership and pattern and residential density, you're not looking at that though. Or am I misunderstanding what your authority is?
It, our authority is from the geologic perspective, yes.
Have a comment, Mr. Commissioner. Here, here's how I see this when I strip everything out. You're bringing in toxic waste, injecting it into bowels of our county, very close to our town. You can't tell us where it's coming from, which I don't think it's coming from the plant. I think it's going to come from other places. You're dumping it in here, just like they're dumping the radioactive waste up in Fremont County. And I truly, my, my constituents don't want you to do it. They've, I get, I get mail, I get called when I walk my dog around the neighborhood. That's when they really come up and talk to me about it. This is not helpful to our county. I don't want you to do it here. My constituents don't want you to do it here. I like what Mr. Milne said. Go do it out where it's not going to bother a bunch of people. Because once that gets into the water out there and their water gets shut off, they can't flush their toilets. It's going to be just like Casper Mountain. If the mining shuts off those artesian wells, they can't flush their toilets. It's already happened in some instances up there. And if you have a house up there that all of a sudden is worth half of what you paid for it or less, you're not going to be a happy camper. And the same thing with out there putting poisonous gas down in the bowels of our county. I'm not a happy guy when I hear this. I'm just not. I think, why are they picking on Natrona County? I don't want you to pick on anybody in Wyoming because it just sounds and you work for the state of Wyoming. Don't both of you work for the state of Wyoming? Protect us. Protect Wyoming people. These guys that want to come in here and say the geology is right, we want her upright, put it next to Casper, Wyoming, tell them to go find another place. That's your job, isn't it? To protect the people of Wyoming from harm, possible harm, knowing that it can happen. So I call on you to do that as your public duty for taking paychecks from the people of the state of Wyoming. Thank you.
I, you haven't been allowed to do your presentation. We're almost out of time. I, I want to say that I'd like you to be very, very conservative in, in, in how you look at this plume. There's a residence that's within the plume on one of your, that slide right there, section 23 on the, I'd be on the northeast side of the plume. And the individual owns, has a house and a well in it's the southwest of the northeast of section 23. As I look at that, he's in the plume area. So I, I just think that you need to pay really close attention to protecting not just the water, but the people who use that water. You've got a couple of minutes. Go ahead and make your responses or your, your points. Can I take this over, Michelle? Does this reach?
I can just wrap up with these locations and I thank you all for your comments. So as you can see, this Casper Carbon Capture Number One Well is proposed to be the southwest quarter of the southwest of section 24 Township 33 North, Range 78 West. The proposed injection formation will be the Lower Sundance Formation, the Gypsum Springs Formation and the Crow Mountain Formation, which are approximately 6,000 to 6,150 feet depth. Again, those are approximate depths that if this well is drilled, those depths will be verified at that time. And the total proposed volume would be 6 million metric tons over 15 years. The upper confinement zone or zones would consist of the Morrison Formation, the Red Water or Upper Sundance Formation, which are made up of shale, mudstone, sandstone, silt stone and limestone and are approximately 307 feet thick. The lower confining zone is the Alkova Limestone and the Red Peak or Chugwater Formation and Goose Egg Formation, which consists of limestone, shale, silt stone and mudstone and are approximately 1,015 feet deep. Or, sorry, 1,015 feet thick. And again, depths and thicknesses are proposed. So this permit, if issued, and again, I want to make that clear. Uh, this is just a permit to construct. If we get there, like I said, an application has been received, it's been reviewed, there are comments. That's as far as we have gotten for now. If it is issued, it will be just a permit to construct. So only construction.
Or does that, does yours reach, Michelle?
So only well drilling and testing would be allowed underneath that permit. No injections other than short duration test water injections would be allowed.
Yes, be gladly.
Once the injection well were to be constructed and the site-specific data were collected, a permit modification would be required before any authorization to inject could be issued. A depth waiver would be required for this well as well. So a depth waiver allows for injection between two underground sources of drinking water. Uh, this would be the first of its kind with a depth waiver. A, a unitization order from the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission would be required as part of the permit mod. Uh, the unitization order would have to be in place prior to authorization to inject. And that I believe is all I have. This is our Class Six web. Uh, and I can give you guys a copy of my business card that has a link to this site as well. Uh, where all of our applications, where all of our applications are listed and available for public.
Is, are there any permits to construct that have been issued statewide at this point?
There have been four permits to construct issued, uh, three in the southwest corner of the state and one in the southeast corner.
And have there been any, sorry, the, the next permit to inject? Have there been any of those?
Uh, no, not, so there have been those four permits to construct issued, but none of those wells have been drilled at this point.
One of the things when I looked at the application a while back, it did mention that one of the risks is earthquake. You know, I, I don't know how realistic that is, but I know in the oil and gas industry and just in general, it can really be a kind of a game changer for the plan of development or for the production or whatever.
Yeah.
And, and I think that that potential, if, if it is a potential, as I read it, um, ought to be paid, ought to be given a little more weight in this case where we do have residential areas rather than out in the middle of nowhere, Wyoming.
Absolutely. Yeah. So seismic risks are always going to be a risk anytime you're doing anything underground, right? With our current permits, the ones that have been issued, they are required to set up a seismic array and collect at least six months of background data prior to drilling any well. Um, so they have background data to correlate to, and then they are required to report any seismic data. I believe at a magnitude of 2.0 or above uh, to us and I, we don't have a specific threshold in those permits for shutting in the well, but anything, any seismic event that would be big enough to register in their seismic array will have to be evaluated.
Does that mean you can shut them down? Uh, so, so say the, the permit constructs been issued, say they drill a well, say they have a permit to inject. We're down the road 10 years, they're injecting, a seismic event occurs. Does DEQ under its rules and statutes have the ability to shut it down or shut further injection down?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I think we're about out of time.
Just one thing, one quick thing. So are, are these poisons being injected in Wyoming as we speak?
No CO2 injections into a Class Six well are occurring. There are CO2 injections into Class Two Enhanced Oil Recovery Wells occurring within.
So where is that coming from? Is that coming from out of state, being piped in, in-state and injected into our ground?
No, I believe that is coming from in-state.
You're from where?
From in-state.
Is, is any intended to be coming from out of state?
One project has proposed to bring CO2 from out of state to inject.
Wait, is that the one in Natrona County?
No.
What, what county is that?
That would be Laramie County.
And where is it coming in from? Which state is it coming in from?
I believe their plan is to bring a pipeline in from Nebraska.
So, so our environmental people are going to allow other states to bring their poisonous gas and be injected in our state? That's a wonderful thing, isn't it? When you really think about it?
Did, did you have anything else you'd like?
I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
So thank you. And Lily, also thank you for reaching out to us in, in August to, to volunteer for this fund that you guys have had. We do appreciate it. You, you know, our one job is to take care of Natrona County. And I think you did hear the, some of the consternation about the location of this. And so we hope that you'll keep that in mind and people can comment when it's time for that. And maybe this commission will too, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is with Lita Pointman, Deputy County Attorney, and Ryan Dabney, Casper Police Department, to discuss Metro Animal Memorandum of Understanding. Welcome.
I don't think we have a fancy PowerPoint. But if you all recall, I believe it was the last work session, I presented the MOU and one of the concerns was a question about a designated vet for the county. The commissioners then had several other questions. I followed up on those questions with Captain Dabney and other individuals from the city. And I answered those in an attorney-client privileged memo. And so we are back today to try to get this resolved one way or the other.
Captain, thanks for coming in today. Lita, is this MOU on our agenda for this evening?
It is not. I wasn't sure how many changes you all had or if you had follow-up. The draft I sent you, there's of course a couple typos we need to change, but.
Commissioners, we are going to have an executive session at five o'clock tonight. So if there are any, if there's a desire to ask legal counsel questions at that, I don't know, are there, is there a desire for executive session tonight on this issue? So I'm not hearing anything on, along those lines. So then I think it comes down to the MOU and some of the pertinent details. It's a, it's, it's one year beginning August 1st. Have we resolved the billing issues? Not that there are issues. Have we resolved the billing stuff from that date to present?
Yes, I did inquire and perhaps the captain can explain it better. It's my understanding that because the way that we're charged currently, and there's an email attached from a fiscal individual at the city, the way it's charged currently, we do not have an itemized invoice from August 1st to now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's just the way it's charged. However, they did send us and it's attached the invoices, of course, with the total payment and then the spreadsheets that were made for the allocation calculation and how they do that. The individual from the city in the fiscal department, I'm just not recalling his or her name, did email and say he or she was willing to try to come up with an itemized statement, you know, five dogs with a broken leg. I have no idea. Six cats. Who knows? He, he or she just stated that they don't have that. They would try to, they could try to recreate that document.
Might allow to answer that?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Appreciate you letting me come and speak. So the the new kind of billing design that we're doing is a census-based, so obviously Casper pays the lion's share of that. We have the largest population. So once we removed, or Evansville removed themselves from this process, we, we reallocated and figured out what the numbers were for the entire county. Casper having, you know, 59,000, the county having 20,000 and so on. And so everybody got a percentage of a census-based model billing. It didn't really move the needle too much as far as how you're being billed, but it's not necessarily just being billed per dog, per cat. It's for the entire cost of the shelter and the animal protection officers that are employed there. So it's light, power, heat. You know, any kind of projects that we have going forward, things of that nature. What we've tried to do in the task force meeting is to make sure that anything that's a large project, such as the generator that we just put in early last year, late last year, we would let you know ahead of time to make sure that you can plan in your budgets for that. It wouldn't be a hip pocket thing, but the the shelter currently, we do repairs every week, almost without fail. So what, what I've asked finance to do is to give you a breakdown that kind of gives you a snapshot of what it costs to run the shelter, what it costs to run the animal protection officers on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, whatever you guys would like. And to present something to you or the task force so that they can actually see where your dollars are going. You know, when, when I took it over in 18, I think it was a $1.4 million operation roughly. And now it's, you know, a little bit higher than that. Again, Casper paying the lion's share and then everybody else picking up the, the other end of this. And it should be either Nicholas Gassman or Joe Johnson, who's the CFO for the city of Casper, that will be able to provide you that. I had a meeting with her and the city manager last week. She, she kind of understands what I need, what you need, and she's working on that document to get it to you.
Mr. Chairman, there's some reason that we don't just pay the percentage as opposed to having an itemized list?
So the, the census model basically is a percentage-based. What, what was asked of us was to give you a percentage of the breakdown of the shelter, the breakdown of the vehicle costs, which we can do. And, and I think one of the questions they had was, are we adding vehicles? We're not adding vehicles, we're replacing vehicles. Once we go into the city council and we figure out what the score is on those vehicles, mileage, service, whether they're good on trade-in value, then we, we trade those vehicles in or we run them for another 10,000 miles. We, we can provide you that, which I think, you know, collectively, if we're all working as a group, I don't have any issue with that. That would be something that sounds completely reasonable to provide to the entities that are working in the user groups. But, but.
Captain, what do you believe is the fairest way to handle, the most simplistic way to handle this?
And I'm not going to steal the, the census model idea. That was not my idea, but it makes the most sense. You have roughly 22,000 people in the county. We have 59,000 people in the city. Mills has 4,800. Bar None has 2,600. For that population, that's what your portion of the billing is. Mills does not have animal protection officers. They just have shelter services. Bar None, the county, and Casper all use the shelter. Just for conversation, the ordering cases come from the county. We've had one in the city since I've been here, which was a large 60 illegal birds in the country, things like that. But all the rest have come from the county and they're usually 20 to 60 and space for and and care for and try and rehabilitate if possible.
Thank you.
So again, to me, it seems like this makes the most sense. It's the easiest to understand. I'm not, not the numbers guy, but it makes sense to me.
Thank you, Captain. Lita, I don't know if you want to speak to that or I have another.
No, sir. I do have two points I would like to address. Uh, thank you. So one of the concerns, well, one of the questions the, the commissioners raised the last time was a designated vet for these animals. And I learned in the meeting that the city does not use one vet. They use whomever is available. They also let us know that there is a level playing field with the cost of veterinarian services. And that if, if it's in the MOU and we agree that we can give them the discretion to use whichever vet is available and qualified. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. Not, not all the vets do all the same things. So, so there's a lot of times where we may have to say, you know, are you available to do this? This, this veterinary service may not have the capacity and we have to go somewhere else for the safety and humanness of treating that animal. In the past, we have just, you know, kind of worked with some of the veterinarian offices and said, hey, you know, are you able to do this? You know, what are the rates? I think that the kind of change in that this year is they're going to direct bill you rather than them billing us and us billing you. You will get a bill from that vet to the county instead of us paying it. And that, that's not in the cost for what the county is being charged.
That's true. To that point, is there like, is there a set schedule for for the vets for this, this process or whatever is going on that they're working on the animal? This is the cost or, or is it up to the vet?
It's, it's market rates. That's what we, we have never tried to set vet rates for them. If we were to enter into an MOU with a vet, maybe that would be an option, but we, because we need all of them, we, we've never done that.
And then at the, at the shelter itself, if an animal comes in, is there a for lack of a better word, cost analysis of how much is going to be spent on an animal that may be injured or whatever?
So what the animal protection officers and the kennel techs do and the new Metro Animal Services Manager, Jody Decker, they, they try and look at what's humane for the animal. If it's humane for the animal, you know, then we work on the cost-effective portion. Nobody likes to hear, you know, what's your animal cost? You know, from, from the feedback we've got from the community, but is it humane to do what we're doing? Can we contact an owner? If we can, then we try and contact that owner and say, is this where you want us to go for this animal? But, but we work on humane first and then we kind of go backwards on the cost from there. We average, and I'm just ballparking, 12 to 20,000 in that bill across the board. Some years we're under that, some years we're right around it.
About how many animals?
So on average, there, I think currently right now we have 45 or 50 dogs. We're supposed to have 30. That's our capacity. And we have 20 to 40 cats. It's kind of off-season for cats. Sometimes we'd have a little bit more. But I think last night's about 45 dogs. So, and, and that's, that's the lion's share of the work is, is the dogs. We did have a durable, but that was minimal.
Lita, when I look at paragraph 5C.
5C, of the MOU? I have medical treatment, C. Correct. This is a draft and that's one place that would need to be changed.
Yeah, it says we shall before entering.
Yes.
MOU.
Yes.
Vet. So.
Yes.
And, and then some of my concerns when we talked about this last time were on the, the exhibits or the addenda.
Yes.
Where it said improvements or it said vehicles. And so I think some of those questions were coming from me. Then Lita clarified it to the extent that I'm comfortable with it. But I don't know if you've made any slight revisions to those addenda that are consistent with what, what you heard from, you know, what the understanding is with the city.
I have not made any changes based off my conversation with the city presented, and that was for the conversation here today as well. And a couple of the major questions such as the vet. And if whatever you all decide, we'll put it in there and they're willing to agree to that, giving this, the metro, the discretion to follow whatever process they typically follow to get the animal services.
Yeah, and terminating, well, it's a one-year deal, but it goes month to month. Or did we say, I forget which MOU we're talking about.
Right.
With the city, but we're going to have like, just in case we get to August or September of 2025, we still have something that's intact.
Yes.
While we do kind of the big plan. So.
We're, we're going to provide services. We, currently we have no contract signed. So we're, we're providing services. We're, we're more than willing to continue to do that. The, the only thing I brought up was I worry about sending APOs into a jurisdiction that we don't have an MOU with. I'm still doing that. I'm still sending them out there and they're still doing good work. I, I think I'm, I'm trying to make sure we're on the same page as far as what your needs are so that we can meet them and then having an MOU that we're both comfortable with. If you, if, if the choice of the commission is to defer to the shelter as far as care, you know, there, there could be a caveat in there where you know, it gets to this exceeding amount where we, we may need someone to contact to say, hey, we're at $2,200 for a dog or what have you. We, we've had those instances where we're, the animal's viable, the vet said the animal's viable and we're trying to do everything we can to save it. And we get to a point where we're 3,000 and we, we know there's an owner, we just can't contact.
Yeah. Well, I think we want this MOU to move forward. I don't, I, I think there is some level where it'd be like, uh, that's a lot.
Yes, sir.
I don't know exactly what that looks like. I don't know if you need direction from us or if you have enough or commissioners, if you have specifics, but I, I think we can get this done pretty quick.
And that leads into the next question. I did speak with the group we met with regarding contact and so forth. And it's my understanding that in 2018, the then under sheriff was fine with whatever Metro decided to do and he or she was the contact person? I, I don't know.
I think it was under Sheriff Sellers.
Okay, so he.
Was here at the time.
Okay.
Basin said, have at it.
Right.
Are, are we okay with the have at it approach? It's, it's a year. And if we need to make an adjustment, we will, but, but hopefully it'll be like in extraordinary circumstances, the city will make reasonable attempts to contact the county.
Absolutely.
About the $5,000 dog.
And, and generally what happens is they, they get the animal to a point where it's stable. And, you know, we can kind of pause for a second, then make some phone calls before we go forward.
I, I think, I think we're saying pretty much the same thing, so.
And I believe that this is a temporary MOU until the new task force or am I incorrect? I thought this was.
There, there was conversations about creating a joint powers board. I, I think collectively in the task force, we've decided we don't need to do that. We're, we're communicating well enough on our level. So I think we've kind of moved past that to this is the committee. We're going to share everything in this committee and make sure that everybody understands what the next step is. You know, we're, we're hopefully, you know, working on a, a new structure to better serve the animals and the employees up there. And we've shared that with the committee. We've shared the process with the committee and, and we're, we're being as open as, as we can.
Mr. Chairman, I am for the new building. I hope the voters vote for the new metro. I wanted to make that clear to my constituents because we need it. Don't we need it, Captain?
I don't think I'm allowed to say that, sir, but I think, I think we have a 40-year-old building.
You what?
We have a 40-year-old building.
Yeah. Well, we have a lot of old buildings in Natrona County, but and I know that the police department does a good job doing this. I know Captain Freel over there had your job at one point in time and I'm always anxious to hear what he has to say from his experience, but I would like to see a clean copy of this document. Are we able to get that by the time we have a five o'clock?
You mean a clean copy of our changes to the MOU that we would then present to the city?
The one that you want us to sign or the one that we're going to sign?
I think the one that, I think the one that was.
It isn't proposed for a night? Okay.
So we'll get it over the next week or 10 days.
Yes.
With the hope that if the next, our October 1st meeting, we can put it on our, our consent agenda, hopefully.
Yes, that's.
I think it can be done by the end of the week.
Right. I agree.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know where we were on it. But I am for the new metro. I'm allowed to say that as an elected official.
Very good. Anything else from either of you?
No, sir. Those were the main questions the commissioners had on this.
Captain Dabney, thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, our next appointment is with Kelly Wessel, Cap Director, regarding board action, regarding miscellaneous, regarding complexities.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I doubt that I ever come here with something simple. But it should be. Um, but it should be simple and that's the problem. Uh, I reached out, um, I'm gonna go back a little bit further. So I started with cap about two years ago, two and a half years ago. I came here and took the position. And one of the first things and first individuals I met with was county legal to get a status of what exactly, what structure of a public community action agency we actually had. Um, because that was unknown. And so we weren't a traditional department of a county government. We are an outside board. Um, we are considered a public, meaning that we are at the, we have some oversight from a governmental entity, but we also do have a full tripartite board that is delegated authority to oversight. And so had those conversations and um, at the time, the liaison from this group, um, the chair, um, in January, we decided to do some digging. And thanks to Michelle, who was able to cultivate and call out some very important documents, uh, we were able to see a little bit of our history. And as a community action agency, there were some documents that were achieved that showed some resolutions that gave us some definition. Definition that even my board at the time had never even seen. So um, one of those is a very specific one that came in two thousand and three that was a resolution that established separate financial accounting systems, renaming the organization to Community Action Partnership of Natrona County. And then defining um, in the resolution, basically what you thought the relationship looked like at the time. And this has proven to be actually a pretty important document because it helps me explain to funders what exactly I am, at least as close as we can, so that they understand when we're applying for funding or we're contracting or my board is pursuing something that this is, these are the limitations, but that we operate with autonomy. Um, we are funding sources other than one funding source, um, excuse me, two funding sources. We receive county funds as well as um, TANF CPI funds. Those go through the county system and then are given to us. Um, those are required to be done that way. All our other funding mechanisms and our budget is in excess. It's over three million. Um, it's getting closer to four now. Um, it are from outside sources, state, federal, private foundational contracts, um, private funding. All of those contracts and, and agreements and financial um, oversight is done by the tripartite board as it was defined in two thousand and three as far as the oversight. I put all this in front of you because I've had an interesting dynamic with our core funding this year. Our core funding, which actually defines us as well as a community action agency, is called Community Service Block Grant. That funding, CSBG, is delivered through the state of Wyoming's Department of Health. The contract came to us this year and um, it has always been signed by the board chair, at least as far as any record that I can find. No, the tripartite board chair has always signed that contract. Um, however, this um, last year, it came to us and it had a um, different signature line. I went back to the, my grant administrator and she had her supervisor correct it and send us the correct contract. Board Chair Christie Oster signed it and life went on. This year I got my contract and the grant administrator um, put that it was to be signed by the um, Board of Commissioners um, Chair. And I questioned it and because I had already provided her the copy of the resolutions prior and had said, you know, you had this corrected last year. And she said, well, I'm having all the public um, CAAs have their commissioners sign off. And I started thinking about it and going through my mind some of the things that would be contradictory. First of all, it would require a different FFAT-A. That's the federal financial, help me here, folks, um, accountability transaction. It's, it's about, it's a document that says that you're not going to do bad things with the federal money. And you sign off on it and you say all the reasons that you qualify for it. I have one of my own under my EIN. Natrona County has one of their own. Um, on the TANF grant, yours is put in with that package. In all my other contracts, mine, um, with my EIN is in there. We have a separate U, um, UEI number as well. So our Sams.gov identification is also different as it should be. So with that in mind, I, I redirected back to that part of the conversation and she didn't want to correct it, didn't want to change it. I shouldn't say correct because it's their grant, right? So I did a little bit of reading and I did a little bit more and I'm like, this isn't going to be right. Our money doesn't flow through their coffers. So you would be attesting and contracting for funds that don't go through you. And that didn't make sense to me. So I reached out to legal, we had some other conversations. It led to more um, information. Long story short, we kind of reached an impasse with this uh, Department of Health. And I decided to, I guess we wound up here. And that I need some sort of resolution or direction in how to get this resolved. And the one saving grace in all of this is I had a very strange email yesterday that said that there was a problem with all the contracts for the state um, under this funding source due to page numbers. And so if you haven't signed it, don't, because we're going to send you a new one. At that point in time, I had to laugh in my chair, but I had to also say, I sent back an email and said, would it, at this juncture, because they have to be redone, could you please consider changing that signature line? That I was meeting with all of you today and that I would, it would be very helpful if they could do that. I also cited that there is another public CAA that was not required to have their commissioners sign off on it. It actually was Fremont County. And that is because they are in a similar situation where they have a separate board that oversees their activity, but they are still the co, the um, public cap for that area. Did I get it?
You paused, does that mean I talk or? Uh, yeah, I, I know you've been working with our legal department for some time on this. Um, my uh, understanding is that um, we're probably going to meet a few minutes in executive session tonight just so we understand, I think, the implications of this way or that way. Um, hopefully we'll be able to move forward pretty, pretty quickly. I, 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 I sign stuff all the time. The, the chair signs stuff all the time for the airport, for example, on different federal um, grants and none of that money comes through the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, I think there's some similarities, but I, I think there's differences as well. I, I think we just need to figure out what we can do. Um, and I, I don't think that the B O C C wants to be really more involved in this than absolutely necessary. We think you're doing a good job. We think you've got a, a good board at this point and, you know, it's unfortunate that you have to spend a bunch of time on, on this rather than taking care of your constituents, but. What, Kelly, um, as I look at your email.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two fundamental items, who actually needs to sign my contract? Um, that's.
That's the big one, I mean.
Um, and, and I am not going to say that I'm going to give you the answer right now. Hopefully, uh, we can understand the situation a little bit better um, tonight and then or have legal give you our opinion. I, at the end of the day, I don't know that our opinion, I mean, doesn't sound like the state wants to change it back to the way it was.
I really am not clear at this point. I haven't had a response to my email from this morning. I can say this, I think that um, at the time that I originally asked for it to be changed, um, it had already been done. And, but now that they're being redone, perhaps there's a different level of consideration.
And you probably, you probably pointed out to Fremont County.
I did point that out because I think it's important. Um, some, not all public caps are the same. In fact, there's actually quite a bit of diversity about them. Um, I think that the private caps are actually more alike, you know, because they just have a, a different standard. I, I feel this way. I feel like we've been operating in a really good way. I think respectfully, the county has been incredibly generous to me as far as encouraging me to access county legal when I need to, as far as certain reviews of contracts. Um, so, and I have taken advantage of that in order to make sure that we are operating correctly. We participate in the county benefits pool, which is extremely beneficial to my um, employees and helps with my retention. Um, otherwise I think I'd be in, in a world of hurt um, from an employer point of view. I believe that our status helps maximize and extend your reach throughout Natrona County to people whose voices and may not always be present in these rooms. And so I think we do a good job of that. And I think that we have done well in working with the peripheral areas of Natrona County, not just focusing on the city of Gaspur. So in all those things, I think that we have a very strong role and we have a good relationship. I just needed a little bit of clarity around this and I bring it to your attention mainly because it's always seemed very nebulous to everyone I have ever spoken to. And I think when we operate from a strong foundation, we're operating from a point of strength and that can only build the capacity of my organization better.
Heather or Lita, do either of you have questions for Kelly um, to either get additional information or answer questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that we, we do. And of course, we can chat with Kelly um, if those additional questions come up.
Absolutely.
Offline here.
Kelly, I don't, uh, I don't have any other questions. Chris or Larry, do you have your light on you? Um, is there anything else that you wanted to either tell us or get from us um, other than the answer your fundamental question?
You know what? I think that's probably a big enough ask at this time. I do thank you very much. I thank you for your support and thank you for your engagement. Um, the people that we're serving are certainly very um, fortunate to have the leadership that we have. And so if there's anything else I can do for you, then you please let me know.
Good.
Kelly, I just want to thank you for bringing this to our attention because I'm, I'm inclined to go along with what, what you've said because money's going through you and it is a little different with an outside board. Uh, but we have enough liability and enough responsibility on our shoulders as it is that we don't necessarily, my personal feeling is we don't need to take on any, anything additional to that. And so I appreciate you bringing that to us and talking to our county attorney about this and we'll see what they have to say too, but that's my personal feeling.
Thank you, sir. I will point out one other separation that we did this last year is, is that we no longer participate in the county warm structure. We are with the liability pool now. That was um, something that was bifurcated. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Yeah, you too. Take care. Let's take a quick break. Um, I think there are of quite a few things to talk about in round tables, so um, let's take five. All right, our next item is our county attorney for a legal update. Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the first matter is maybe a quick agenda review for this evening's meeting. Just wanted to see if there were any questions on any of the items on the agenda that I can try to answer for you if I can. I think she'll have the best information. I'm not aware of any changes or updates.
Madam Clerk, tonight we have transferred ownership from Gavin to B F S. Is there any additional information on that than what was previously discussed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, not that I'm aware of. Nothing's been brought to my attention.
What does B F S stand for?
That I do not know. I'm not sure. I'm assuming the applicant will be here again tonight. But that's just an assumption. I haven't been told that.
I think the items on the consent agenda, there's a resolution dissolving the Hillcrest acre subdivision improvement service district. There is an agreement with Mr. Ford to act as hearing officer for our hearing scheduled for October 9th for Circle Drive. Jared put together some information about the proposed resolution sixty dash twenty-four that would approve the vacation of the remaining lots of the new country club height subdivision. Are there any questions on that particular item that anybody had?
What are they doing? Just consolidating and just eliminating those lots?
Yep.
Okay.
They're just kind of these, these, I don't know, abandoned lots or, or orphaned lots out there that aren't part of a subdivision any longer because other portions have been vacated over time.
Okay.
So they just like to, to vacate the subdivision and then I think the plan is to sell the property. There is an agreement with Casper College for some clinical work at the detention center from the sheriff's office. And then final acceptance of the Casper Mountain Circle Drive road project on there as well. And those are the items I'm most familiar with, if there's any questions at all.
Appreciate that.
Okay. If, if there's no questions, then I can give you a quick status update on the, the Teton County case currently pending before the Wyoming Supreme Court. The County Commissioners Association and the Citizens for Responsible Use of State Lands both submitted motions to participate and motions for leave to submit an amicus brief around September 9th and 11th. Responses, I believe from the state on those motions are due September 24th and then this state's response brief is due October 14th. And that's the, the latest on that particular case. Not yet. I believe oral argument may have been set for the intervenors' appeal. The citizens group. Yes, sir.
Hey Heather, on the Ruckey Mountain Power on, and I apologize for not looking this up earlier, on Robertson Road, is that in Mills? I wasn't sure exactly where that was because all that, I was, I thought that that, I, I was assuming that that was associated with this new school that was going in, but I don't know if that's actually what that was or not, so.
I'm afraid, I, I'm not sure whether that is in Mills or not. I, if I can maybe have some time, I can get in touch with Mr. Hagler and find out. I know there's, I think there's still a portion of Robertson Road that the county does maintain even.
We have half of it.
Yeah.
And that's from the bypass up to Zero Road. And that's it. We have the west half of that. So that's the reason why I was, I was wondering the east half is all part of Mills. So it's kind of. I just wasn't sure. I couldn't think of anything else where they were, they'd be crossing road in there, so I wouldn't.
Yep, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know for sure what the,
Okay.
what the nature of the licenses or who it's going to supply power to.
Okay.
The Settler Wind Project, the, the permit hearing is going on right now. It's been broken into two phases. The, the permit phase is the first phase. That's, that's going on right now. The second phase will start tomorrow and that will involve the impact assistance funds. So I'll be there with the sheriff and Brian Oliver from the fire district to, to make our pitch and our case for our impact assistance request, as will all the other municipalities that are involved. Nobody came to an agreement on an M O U, so we're going to see how this goes. And then the, the Dutchman Solar Project is, is right behind this one. The hearing on that will be in November. So maybe we'll, we'll see if the, if the parties are, are willing to participate a little better for that one. I don't know. And then our office, we are preparing for the public meeting on Circle Drive on October 9th. As I said, we've got a hearing officer on board. We've, we've got witnesses lined up to come and testify as to the use and maintenance of the road. And we're working on exhibits, maps and documents that kind of show the, the county's ownership and use of the road. And then I have prepared and sent a very rough draft at this point, M O U to the city for the proposed land swap. When I get some feedback from them, I'll share it with you all to see what your thoughts are and see if there's any additional terms or changes you'd like to have for that. One thing I guess I'd like to ask with respect to the parcels that we know that we are, are willing to have, have be part of that swap. Would you like us to start trying to get title commitments on those parcels here soon? I know that the, the goal is to get this done by the end of the year, so.
Who, who paid for the title work on the 12th and Conwell?
I believe we did.
We were the grantee under that deal.
We were.
And we're the grantor on the majority of the parcels?
We are.
Okay. On this. I just think that maybe consistency will be good. I know the city would, anyway.
I will check.
Commissioner Frill's looking at me. He knows where I'm headed with this. Yeah, I, I, I don't know if we've decided who's paying for, for what on that.
I don't think that's been decided, Mr. Chairman.
Thoughts, Commissioner Frill? Okay. Heather, when do you think, do you? October 1st is our next meeting. I don't know if we'll have something to look at during our work session for that. If, if it's feasible, that would be nice.
I hope so. A, as I said, I at least have the, the basics of a, of a rough draft put together. If, if the city has additions, I'm hoping there's at least a, a draft that you can look at by that time.
Okay.
Has been through both the city and county legal.
In the process of scheduling a meeting with Carter next week. So I'll mention it that the ball will be in their court. Okay.
Okay, and then I think that, that's really it, other than, you know, the, the day-to-day stuff that, that we do, unless you guys have questions about any particular projects that we're involved with.
Questions? Commissioner Frill?
Just on the other land swap, have you had a chance to talk to Ken Barbe?
I have a, I think we've been kind of missing each other, so I had an initial conversation with him and have yet to touch base with him again on, on, on that, to see where he's at on that, but it's on my list.
Anything else for legal? Okay. We'll have an executive from 5:00 to 5:30. Can visit about various things. I think then at this point we can, did you have anything else Heather? Then we can go ahead and move to commissioner round table. And I think that I'll start. And I'll probably finish too, but let's start with, I have a reason for that. I have a reason for that. Don't, don't tempt me. I'll make sure that it's about sixty seconds. No, hey, let's go ahead and have Michael Brown and Ron Shosch come on up and we'll talk about the Trail Center. Commissioners, we didn't get this as a separate item. It kind of came together kind of in short order, but there are, I think, a couple pressing items to visit about. Michael, it's the trash enclosure and the soils. Where do you want to start?
I'll start with the trash enclosure. It's pretty simple. The specified trash enclosure is a six-foot tall chain link fence, ten by ten. With the equipment that the Parks Department has, we will have to manually remove snow from that enclosure since there's no roof on it. And so I put in a, a change order request to see what the cost would be to expand that to fifteen feet wide by ten foot deep. I also requested that the chain link be raised up to eight feet and we would put privacy slats in that. One of the reasons for the increase in height is we typically have private property owners that like to utilize our garbage and six feet's pretty easy to throw, eight feet's not. We also have, I wouldn't say we have a bear problem, but we do have bears in the area and eight feet's a little harder to get over than six feet for the messes. The reason to widen it out for the fifteen feet is so that we can back drag the snow out of there in the winter time with our equipment versus manually shoveling or trying to snow blow four feet of snow out of our trash enclosure. And so that change order request came in a little over $6,000. I do have in my bu, my mountain budget funds to pay for that. So really, I'm just hoping that we can get that approved so that operationally it'd be a simpler process and more efficient.
Just a quick question on that. How come you don't put a roof over it?
Well, we may, you don't want snow in time. So we may put a roof over it in the future. However, speaking with the architect on that, if we do it during this contracted process, it would probably require a structural engineer to review that. Where, once this is turned over to the county, then I can work with the building department and possibly maintenance and we can do a roof after the fact that may not have to go through a more rigorous design process.
There was one in the original design. It got value engineered out when it went through the value engineering process.
So there is one, there's draw, there's something there already?
There was something designed and it got value engineered out when we were reducing the cost at the beginning of this project.
So how much would it cost to value it back in?
We would have to look at those drawings and, and have a, have Casper do a cost proposal on that.
Does that cost anything to have them to give us the information?
No, it just takes time and at this point, we'll be pouring sidewalk hopefully tomorrow, which will go up to that enclosure and they'll start. If this is approved, they will start building that enclosure. If it's not, they'll start building the smaller enclosure as contracted.
You're going to be removing garbage after it's got four feet of snow on it? Because we don't have a roof over it.
Well, we'll be able to mechanically remove it with our backhoe, so we won't have to shovel it out. We use cylindrical cans. It's not a, not a big roll-off dumpster or a large dumpster like we have out in this parking lot. But we'll be able to back our vehicle and our dump truck in there and we'll be able to operate with.
It'll be a lot easier if you had a roof, wouldn't it? You don't have to deal with the snow that way.
It would, and I think the roof will probably come in the next season by, by staff and approval by the building department.
Michael, when I talked to you the other day, you said there wasn't any additional concrete, that this was just a gravel pad, but it has in here additional concrete, $1,300. Additional fence, eight, eight hundred and eighty and slats for the fence, seven hundred and seventy-five. I guess I have the question, is it, is it a gravel pad or is it a concrete pad?
It, it's a compacted gravel pad within, inside there.
So where's the other $1,300 in concrete come in?
I believe widening it out required some additional posts, but I don't know exactly what that.
Not $1,300 for the concrete post? I'm sorry, but fifteen by ten is not a very big area.
So what was the, what was the former size?
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten.
So expanding it by five feet, I'm sorry, but I can't. That $6,600 for expanding it by five feet does not make any sense at all. For $6,400, doesn't make any sense at all to me. And the other question that I've got associated with this, that you could also do instead of putting an eight-foot chain link, is put six-foot chain link and then put four strands of barbed wire on top of that. That would do the same thing to keep the bears out and restrict the access. And it's a whole lot cheaper than putting chain link up there.
When, when you go to throw the bag over the barbed wire and it gets hung up and then it opens up the garbage bag and it gets all over, I've seen that happen before.
Yeah, we, we could do that. I'm not sure if that's as aesthetically pleasing to have barbed wire there versus taller chain link. We can stay with what we have.
Just regular barbed wire.
Yeah.
I don't want it to look like a prison.
And we can, we can, if we have to operate with a ten by ten and, and just manually. And we can, we can, if we have to operate with a ten by ten and, and just manually do the work, we'll manually do the work. This was just a, a concept after discussion with my staff as to operation-wise, um, what we should, you know, what we'd like to have, so.
Yeah, cause basically you generally put your post between eight and ten feet apart. So you would have one additional post on the backside is all you would have by doing that.
That's a question I'm gonna have to refer to Caspar to get an answer on.
Well, I think part of it's gonna be, cause these ones still have gates on them, right?
They, they have two seven-foot gates.
Yeah, so the gates get bigger.
Right, but you've still got, you've still got, oh, you get, still got the same number of posts. You just put a four-inch post on the side to hold it instead of a two-inch post. They'll hold a seven-foot gate without any trouble, especially with that, with a, a one-foot gap in between. So where, so where does the additional concrete come in? Cause I still can't see thirteen hundred dollars for the concrete in there.
The only thing I can think of is, um, because we have eight-foot posts, maybe they're setting them deeper. And so there's additional concrete.
Three feet.
For the footers.
Three feet's pretty standard.
I will have to, uh, refer to Caspar and get that answer.
I wasn't aware we were talking about this today. I came for a different subject, so I can ask my staff.
Michael, how detrimental would this be if you didn't have, get the change order stayed at the original ten?
We're probably just gonna manually, you know, maybe drive the skid steer over there or manually plow it out with a snow blower. It'll just take time, just more time. It's all about efficiency. We've more than doubled our parking lot and with our, uh, thirteen-foot-wide snow blade on our backhoe, um, instead of four hours, we're looking at eight hours of plowing that parking lot. With the equipment that we have.
Okay, so you're planning on using that snow blade then, not just normal bucket?
Yeah, the front end, uh, so, uh, Run Bridges has a front-end loader up there. But when we have the snows that we get, that's occupied for several days before we have access to that to clear the parking lot. So, yeah, we'll still be using our backhoe to do all that work.
Michael, I appreciate that you have the funds, um, available to pay for this. You know, arguably those funds could be used for, you know, maybe even a bear trap. I don't know, like, I don't know what it would pay for, for a bear trap shelter, but not much. But in any event, there, there, there's some other things that maybe that six thousand three hundred and ninety-one could be used for. Um, I kinda like the idea of, um, increasing the height of the fence. I'm not really sold, um, on the expansion of the, uh, this, the, um, trash enclosure. If, if there's an opportunity to, uh, or even a likelihood that you're gonna be able to work with building and maintenance to put a roof on, on it in a year or less. And so it might not be as much fun this winter. But, um, if, if the current design size of ten by ten is adequate for the needs of, of that building and if there can be a, a roof added to it, um, without too much trouble, um, down the road, then, then maybe we can save on, on the concrete side of it. Commissioners, I don't know if you wanna weigh in on, on any of that.
At this point in time, I'd agree with that statement. We've had a lot of cost overruns on this building.
What are your thoughts, um, even, even though this isn't, this wouldn't be associated with the cost on the building?
I, I don't think this, I don't think, I, I realize that he has the money in his budget, but I don't think this is a good use of that money.
Okay, and then what about the, uh, raising the height of the fence?
I don't have any problem raising the height of the fence, but like I said, you could actually use barbed wire on the top, you know, and barbed wire, yeah, okay, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing, but you're talking about over a six-foot fence and you're not talking about big chunks. All you're doing is talking about something to keep the bears from climbing over more than you are people throwing over this, over the top. So, cause once you get the lid on it, then that's gonna, that's gonna take a lot of that out of it anyway.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, it appears that there was, um, that there's supposed to be concrete inside this, um, structure. And so that would be where the additional concrete cost would be is for that five-foot by ten-foot area.
But for the whole thing, if you ran six inches thick on a ten by fifteen, you're talking about less than three yards. Even with the additional cost at being three hundred dollars a yard, that doesn't add up to thirteen hundred dollars, which is what Caspar originally had in the additional amount. So that's still less, and that's for the entire path. That's not just for an additional yard, which you're talking about. And if you go to four inches, which really all you have to have, cause it's not a structurally sound, I mean, it's not a, it's not a foundation. And all you're doing is putting garbage cans on it, then you're talking about less than two yards for a ten by fifteen. So thirteen hundred dollars still doesn't add up at all.
Mr. Chairman, at, at this point, um, we can operate with the ten by ten with the six-foot fence. Uh, we can plan for a roof afterwards. That roof will be sloped. Um, the front of it at the gate would be higher up so that our dump truck can clear that. And, you know, we can come up with a plan, either, um, barbed wire to close the gap there or wire or, uh, sheet metal seating, sheeting down the side to the top of the six-foot fence. Um, we can come up with a plan for that afterwards. But, uh, to progress further with this project, I, I would, um, like to pull this request and just stick with what is in the plans and the contract at this time.
Ron, what do you, thank you, Michael. Ron, what do you think about increasing the height of the fence? Um, I, the, the barbed wire thing concerns me. Um, that's what I do out at the ranch. This isn't a ranchy feel kinda thing for me, but what are your thoughts?
Increasing the height, fine. Barbed wire, I would actually have to check with code officials. I know there's like limited use of barbed wire that they like to see for certain things, so I don't even know if you could. Um, I don't know off the top of my head. I think for what it is up there, going with the, just the higher fence should be sufficient. The, uh, adding anything as far as roof in the future is going to involve columns, foundations and all these other things. So it's not like you can just add this on top of the fence post, so just understand that. But I mean, you could go with a taller fence. There's also, you can take the, um, I don't know how, how it's specified in here right now, but you've got the knuckle side of the fence, which is smooth. And then you've got the spikes usually at the bottom. You can flip that up so the spikes are at the top for security reasons that also help. I mean, if somebody climbs up it and gets injured, then it's a matter of, you know, I used to work for government, we had drunk people kicking doors and break their leg and then sue the county. So, I mean, so I, you know, that's your call on that as far as that goes, but I mean, those are other things you can do.
Thank you. Um, other thoughts? Commissioner Mill?
Yeah, I'd say, uh, appreciate you pulling that request, Michael. I think those funds could be used better to put that roof on rather than expand it at a later point. I also, I, I don't. The, the barbed wire fence out, out at the place, yeah, no problem up there where it's supposed to be what we're dealing with now for the lodge, quote unquote. Um, I don't think that quite fits, so I'd go with the full-size chain link myself, extend it up. I wouldn't put the points up though. That's, that's just asking for, uh, your hefty bag to be ripped and have trash droon all over the place.
Or while they're pulling, they're doing this tomorrow, aren't they?
They're doing it soon, I don't know.
As I was gonna say, go back and ask Neil for more explanation if there were like foundations for additional posts, if it would like, it have, break it out in detail. If, if that helps with anything.
So Commissioner Laird, nothing? Okay. All right, well, I, I think that's, that's it on that one. I think we'll, we'll pull that. And then if there's more conversation to have on concrete, we can do that. Ron, I think, uh, both of you, I think that's a good idea, maybe to ask Neil. Um, and, and help us maybe get a better understanding of that. But, um, I, I think we'll probably be good for now with it as designed.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would add is if you're trying to keep people from throwing trash in there or throwing, or bears getting in there, just run chain link over the top of the thing and call it a day. Nothing's gonna get in there. If you're gonna throw trash on top of it, it's gonna land on top of a fence.
Uh, I, I don't know, um, about snow load and things like that, but, um, I don't know. Ron, any ideas on that?
I don't know, and I know they need clearance for their equipment to getting in and out of there and things like that. I mean, I don't know what the cost would be just to put a security camera pointing out that way and just having it recorded to see who's doing it too. I mean, just sticking another security camera on the building looking that way.
The chain link top is a inexpensive add that can be done at later date pretty simply, so. So I, I stand by pulling this request and maybe revisiting some of it at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ben, with regard to the soils, um, Commissioners, uh, per my request, I guess, or our request, um, Ben Hauser submitted his recommendation. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at that. Ron also, um, sent some additional information, um, including, uh, a cost, uh, for that. So I guess I've kind of set the table, Michael. Um, why don't you let us know where we're at or you wanna proceed there?
Yeah, so at this time, um, we have the change order requests, ten, uh, R two, uh, with, uh, Mr. Hauser and Mr. Shosch's recommendations detailing the reasoning for that. Um, we have expanded the area. This should be the maximum area. I was notified that, uh, while the, um, electricians were trenching conduit to the parking lot light posts, um, you could distinctly see right around the edge of this, uh, area of concern that it transitions into, uh, higher-quality soils. Um, so, Mr. Hauser's recommendation has been kind of verified by that trench and seeing that, uh, Neil with Caspar, uh, passed that along to the architect. And then I heard of that today, so, um, I think, um, this is a good solution. It's a more cost-effective solution than the original, um, plan. There will still be some maintenance, but we will not, I don't expect that we'll have buses getting stuck up to your axles or heavy equipment. Um, and we'll definitely be mindful of it and pay attention to the parking area. So if we do see significant deformation, we can close it off before, uh, we have those issues.
Michael, I read through all that stuff and I didn't see anything that says that that's gonna guarantee that's, that's gonna fix it, that we're gonna get any warranty out of that. Is that the case?
Correct. They're basi- it is based on the professional opinion of the geotechnical engineer and the civil engineer based on their many years of experience. Um, there is no test for it or anything like that. Can't guarantee it. I mean, it's their best solution, economical solution, uh, for this situation. If you want a better solution, that was the two-hundred-something-thousand-dollar solution as it is now. So that, that was his first, you know, Michael, when we first started this, that he, I wanted to, you know, I want the best thing out there. We got essentially, make sure nothing's gonna sink or settle or whatever, and that was the first solution. So that cost an arm and a leg.
So it's still buyer beware.
Yep, and even with the, no matter which one you do, you're still gonna have to touch up the surface, cause it's an ivoryed parking lot. So you're gonna get, you know, you're driving on it, the gravel's gonna move, whatever, you're gonna have to touch it up either way. But based on their experience, they believe this is a good solution. That is a compromise between the most expensive and doing nothing.
Just for the record, I'm still not comfortable with, with that, because I still don't know where that water's coming from. I understand the difference in the soil types, understand that completely. But if we don't find out where the water's coming from and cut that off and eliminate that source, then we're, we're looking at the same potential problem down the road. And that's, that's what my concerns are. It's not just going in there and, and doing this. But if we don't find out where that, where the problem's coming from, cause that didn't used to be that way. You know, I mean, earlier in the year, it wasn't as bad. And I understand that the more you work on those types of soils, the more pumping you're gonna get, the more type of activity you're gonna get in that, in that, those type of soils. But that water's still gotta be coming from, and right now, we don't know where that's coming from.
Yeah, and this area wasn't previously the parking lot. This was under trees and stuff. So, I mean, nobody was really driving on it as much as, far as I know, I don't know, but, um, so, yeah.
And, and Commissioner North, historically, this has been soft. They've sunk tobacco in here in the past. Sheriff's trucks have sunk in this nearby area in the past. Um, so it, and that was brought up, uh, in design that this is soft. But it was understood based off some of the geotech data that we had, which is to the north of this, that it should be able to be handled and, you know, but it's, it's really unforeseen. We didn't know how soft it was gonna be after it'd been worked and filled and cut, so.
Well, and I know at the last meeting, you guys got beat up pretty bad about this. And I'm not gonna go to that extent, but I still think that this was something that was missed in the original design that shouldn't have been missed. That's my personal feeling.
Okay, all right. Can I address that? I've got a diagram here. Can I share it with you all?
So this is an overlay of the soft spot area. And on there you can see the borings, the lighter blue borings are from twenty-twenty-one, which was the study that you all had done, um, when you had this building designed the first time. And then we had the same geotechnical firm do the additional boring. So they supplemented it for where the building was gonna be located. So that's the darker blue ones that start out on their twenty-two oh five. That's their project number, I guess. Um, and as you can see here, they had two borings in the parking lot. The borings three, six, and five were outside of the soft spot area. Um, soft spots are unforeseen conditions. There's nothing we can do to predict them. Um, borings, what borings measure are actually about a hole this big in the exact spot you drill them. And people use that as a basis for their geotechnical studies and they would hope that that is typical of all the soils around them. But as you can see here, there were three right there, right there near this soft spot and we just, they weren't in that location. Owners don't wanna pay to have us drill every square inch of their property, nor do they want us to sit there and, and drill an unnecessary amount of holes. I'm working on another project with a different geotechnical engineer. It is over three and a half times the size of this site. It is over nine times the size of this building. We have the exact same number of holes that got bored on that site for that size building. It's a forty-two thousand square foot facility on like a nine and a half acre site.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate it. I, I, I wish we, um, had some borings in the area, the impacted area. Um, I don't know that we missed it because as I Um, I don't know that we missed it because as I recall, there were a lot of trees and there was wet and there was, you know, there was a whole bunch of stuff that would have made boring. Uh, if, if not, it would have been difficult and expensive. Um, and so, uh, you know, it's, it is, it is what it is, I guess. Um.
And these other ones that were there were further up into the trees for some of them. So, I mean, it's, it is what it is. Um, our understanding initially of water coming over here and everything else, that's one of the reasons why we put this drain pipe in here to capture this water coming off the road and not running across the parking lot. Um, so, I mean, soft spots are an unforeseen condition. They happen on projects. Um, when you're dealing with underground, you don't know what's gonna happen. A good example of that would be the juvenile detention center. Uh, when we were working on that building, uh, not gonna give you exact numbers, but I believe we had, um, drilled pairs on that building that were thirty feet deep. Something came up where we had to rotate the building by one degree. We rotated the building by one degree and a portion of the building was rotated over a site that nobody knew where the bedrock went from thirty feet down to sixty feet deep. And now the contractor had to do sixty foot drilled piers in sand and had to case all those. Um, but again, it's underground. We can't predict everything under there. We can only gather information and hope for the best. Um, but soil conditions underground are, you know, they, you get soft spots, you get issues. Um, there's nothing that the design team missed on it. This is what it just is.
Get your drill.
Mine has to do with the building. So if you wanna continue this.
Um.
And, and, and I guess one other thing too, to point out, um, on that note, the big concern when they do the geotechnical reports are the weight of the building and what that's gonna hold. So what soils will hold for a building and what soils are gonna hold for an aggregate parking lot are two different things. Because this was an aggregate parking lot, that you're not concerned about the weights as much as you are of a building. Now, if there was asphalt or concrete on there, then they do a little bit more diff, you know, they designed a little bit sturdier, but because it's an aggregate parking lot, that's just how it's designed.
Yep. Um, I, I think that the eighty, uh, is better than I expected, actually. Um, I don't like it. Um, but I, I think it is unforeseen and I frankly like the idea of not going down thirty to forty inches and changing, and, and Mr. Hauser kind of alluded to this, you know, kind of changing whatever subsurface groundwater situation there is, we'll, we'll do this. We should have, um, you know, frozen soil for a lot of the year. So we shouldn't have, you know, y- y- anyway, I, I think that bus, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of buses sinking. Um, I, I think this is a good way to move forward. Um, like you said, like a compromise.
And, and the other comment on all this too is I understand, you know, there's some concern, you know, the, the general contractor gets their markup or whatever. That's just the way it is with construction projects. You've got the sub pricing, the general contractors managing it. They've got their bonds and everything else that they gotta pay for. Um, if you postpone this and you decide to do it, say next year or something like that, who knows if construction costs will go up. You, you will, you will take, you know, yeah, that markup will come out of it. Construction pricing could go up. Who knows? You're gonna now inconvenience the whole project again, tearing up the parking lot all over again after you just got it put together. Um, you may have to get, you know, geotechnical engineer involved. You've already got them on the books this, with this project to take care of this. Um, so there's other added costs. I don't know that you all are necessarily considering when you think about pushing this off into the future. If that's one of the things you're considering.
Yeah. Um, you know, I am, I'm a little bit, you know, I, I guess that we are gonna have some concrete, um, handicap parking spaces. So hopefully those will hold up. Um, otherwise it's just aggregate and we can add more and we, or we can, you know, dig it out and deal with problems if we decide we need to and have the money to. Commissioners, anything else on, uh, on the soils? I would like to have this added to either our consent agenda or as a, an item tonight on, on the agenda, uh, to approve this. Um, or at least to vote on it. Um, any thoughts on, any other thoughts on adding, uh, this, uh, number ten to the agenda tonight? Okay. We'll go ahead and do that. Um, let's put it on the consent. And then if somebody wants to take it off, we can do that. Otherwise it'll be on the consent. Commissioner Freel.
The only thing that I wanna bring up, and it's a comment that you, that you just made, Ron, that, uh, it just is rather irritating to me in looking at these is that we are paying literally thirteen thousand dollars total to fix this for the company, I S C O. Come in there and do everything that needs to be done to fix this parking lot. Their total bill is sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, but yet we're being charged eighty thousand six, six hundred and forty dollars. We're paying general conditions of ten percent. Insurance of one point five, bonds of one point five, and a contract would be a five percent. Basically to a contractor who oversees a project, but he doesn't do anything at all. I S C O will come up and do the, do the work. And they don't do anything. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, they're managing the project. Um, but I mean, that's, that is what they're entitled to based on their contract. Um, and that's gonna be on any construction project, project. You've got whatever construction projects you guys have going on when there's a change order, the general contractor managing it gets their markup.
True. So, and I, and I guess I'm not asking a question. I'm making a statement. My statement is, is that contractors come in here and they give us a bid and they say that we can build it for X amount of dollars. And we're on, we're on change order number ten right now. I would be very curious as to how much money we paid out to the contractor for all these change orders that have taken place to this point. And essentially they manage it. They write a piece of paper, send it to us and say, hey, these guys over here can come fix this for you. By the way, you owe me an additional thirteen thousand dollars for telling you that this guy over here can get it done. So my statement is, it's irritating as can be that we go from two point nine, almost three million dollars to three point one five on this project. All through change orders that have taken place, things that have happened. And really, how much money are we paying a contractor to write up a piece of paper to tell us we've gotta, we gotta fix some things. This will cost, but by the way, you owe me fifteen percent above the deal.
That's, that's what my concerns are. And I think that this is something to be responsible. I mean, in another month, this is all gonna be frozen. And how much do we actually have to utilize this during the winter? And yeah, construction costs may go up, but I have a hard time believing that we go from sixty-seven to where it is in one year, especially if we, if we establish that with the, the contractor that's, that can do the work. So I have a hard time with justifying that. And right now, when we can come back and get it done next summer, and it's gonna be, we could go ahead and schedule it and get it on a contractor's thing and call, and save the county a lot of money in the process. So that, that's where I have problems with it.
If I could piggyback one, one comment onto that. I mean, essentially we're sitting here looking at who's gonna do the work anyways. And I'm not saying push it off and, and the rate's gonna go up. But are they gonna go up thirteen thousand between now and next year? Why wouldn't I just wait and say, okay, never mind. I'm not gonna pay an additional thirteen thousand dollars to a contractor to tell me I need to have this done. And they make that kind of money for doing nothing, when I could maybe wait six more months when the snow clears and go back to the guy that gave me the original bid and say, how much did it go up? Well, maybe it went up three grand. Okay, now I'm paying seventy thousand, not eighty thousand dollars to get this done. At some point, the contractor's gotta sit back, and I know that's how they make their money, but you gotta sit back and say, maybe think the way we're thinking too of, these guys could really wait for about six more months and cut me completely out of this and I make nothing out of the deal. And the other guy's gonna make maybe another three grand.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can't address that. I mean, I know that they've spent time on this. My firm, my engineers probably have ten thousand dollars into this and not, you're not paying me anything for it. It's part of my contract. I, I, so how much time they have into this, meetings, going up there, observing, doing all this other stuff? It wouldn't surprise me if they had the same amount of money. So I, I, I can't say, you'd have to ask them, you know, specifically. I can tell you this, I mean, just for the record, um, so people understand, we're on change order number eight, not ten. Um, some of those change orders were no dollar amounts. They were for extensions of time.
Fireplace.
Um, there's a fireplace in there. There are absolutely no change orders in here that are, uh, due to design errors by the design team. Most of these change orders are for requests for changes, um, by the owner. So I just, just so everybody understands that, I mean, when you guys make those statements, it makes it sound like we screwed things up and people see these YouTube videos. And so I just wanna make that clear to everybody that these are not due to design errors.
So then let me clarify the comment that I made of ten change orders was what Michael said. There was ten change orders.
Well, they, they're, it's change order request number ten. The actual change orders are eight.
Okay. Yeah. So that's where my statement comes from. And the other statement I made is I would like to know what the amount is. I didn't say there was one on every one of these change orders. I would like to know how much additional money we're putting back into this project through these change orders, just to clarify.
Ron, there was one design, the lights. That, that would, because it was, it was sent out to modern to go ahead and order the lights because they were told that this is what size they were gonna be. I realize that that changed with the kit, but that is a design change. That is not, that is not any fault of ours. That is not our requirement. That was something that is a change. And I, I realize that that may be semantics, but that's basically what it amounts to. So there was.
Right. But it's not, it's not on the design team. The, the pre-adjourned metal building people designed the building that they designed.
But that was not owner's problem.
Right. That's fair. That's not yours. It's not mine. It's on the pre-adjourned metal building folks.
Okay.
And that's fair.
And, and, and just so, I, I wanna be clear for myself. Uh, I'm, I'm not suggesting we're a change order number eight because of your firm or the design team. I think that there are a lot of circumstances that come into play here, um, that are beyond anybody's control. Um, for example, when, on that package, when they said, well, here's the package. Well, then that required the change of the lights. We didn't like it. It was five grand plus. We, we entered into a contract that allows the contractor to add these percentages to these change orders. The contractor could say, never mind, but contractors don't do that. We shouldn't expect them to. And we're not gonna ask them to say never mind about the additional essentially fifteen percent on these things. Um, there is time, there is energy, there's remobilization. There's, you know, if the con, the contractor, we come back to him next year and say, what are your prices now? Contractor may say, I'm way too busy for your stuff up on the mountain. There's some mountain projects. There, there, it's not kind of in the backyard here at the county, you know, at two hundred North Center, David. So I, I understand where we're at. I don't like it. Um, I, I share some of the frustrations, but I'm not pointing a finger at the contractor or at you or at you, Michael. Um, you know, there's some things that we might have done differently. But we're in the middle of this thing and we need to get through it. And if it's eighty thousand dollars to get us to a point where we can proceed forward, including with our agreement with the school district that we're gonna build this additional parking lot. I think that looks pretty poor on us if we say, yeah, we'll take your seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Part of which was based upon us enlarging the parking lot and then saying, well, your buses are getting stuck because we wanted to wait nine months or whatever. Yeah, I, I, I think we're, we need to do something now. I think we should move forward. I think it's just gonna get way more expensive. Uh, and we'll, we'll hope for the best. And, and that's why I'm, I'm gonna be in favor of this particular change.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say one more item, as for the project schedule, uh, I believe Casper, um, based on whatever your guys' decision is on this, whether it's approved or not approved, if it's not approved, they'll continue with the original design and finish the parking lot as originally planned. Um, just to keep on schedule. They're, they're at that point to get this taken care of in the next week, um, one way or the other. So.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Commissioner Laird, you've got your line on.
Just remember this discussion when they start putting up that, uh, health building and the change orders come in there. I've never seen a project of any size where there weren't change orders from the city to here. I just wanna get the thing done, have it a nice place for our constituents, be treated fairly, whoever, uh, if somebody makes a mistake, fine, correct the mistake. Uh, then get the matter taken care of and do it on time. That's really what I wanna see happen. And I know prices are gonna go up. And the more you put these things off, next year's gonna be more expensive. It's the way it's been for the last ten years that I know of, that I can remember. So, and, uh, I just know that the commissioners didn't miss anything. We hire people to do the job. Uh, that's all we have. People do the job. Get the thing built.
Anything else? Any last comments? All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming in. Commissioner Laird, roundtable comments? Not just commissioner comments, that's later, but just roundtable.
What's the difference?
One's shorter.
Oh, what, this one's shorter or the one later's shorter?
Uh, no, just.
I'm gonna reserve any comments I have till later on.
Yeah, yeah. Just more like updates, I think is.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good to, uh, pass it off to somebody else.
Commissioner Lord.
I'm sure you guys are aware of this and, uh, the public is too, but the number of deaths we had in the last week and a half in this county due to suicides is pretty, pretty unsettling. Um, and that's, that's something that I know, I don't know what the solution is. I don't know if anybody knows what the solution is because there's so much variation in, in each one of them. But between that and the number of fires that we've had, um, across the state and in our neighboring states, I'm really glad that we have the seat, the tanker addition here at the county, because that has really made a huge difference as far as protecting our firefighters, protecting our, our property and, and everything else around the county. And I think that's something that, uh, for those of us who have fault buyers, I, uh, it is, it is a major contribution, not only to the county, but to the state. And I'm just glad we have it here.
Okay. Well, for roundtable, um, any updates? Uh, Commissioner Freel, your turn.
Uh, the only thing, I brought this up the other night, C, uh, C N F R, looking to see who's gonna be the next person up there. And I know you wanna wait until you get everybody here, but just to keep in mind, C N F R is gonna need somebody, um, Metro, I'm on that committee now. And as you're moving forward, making changes on this, it'd probably be good to have somebody else engaged in on that now with me until the end of the year. So that you've got somebody doing that and then M P O is gonna be another one. Because I believe the county's project is the next one coming up. So just keep those in mind. It'd probably be better to plug somebody in sooner than later.
Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, just, uh, as an update, we did have our, uh, financial hospital funds committee meeting. Uh, Troy and, and Joan were presented. Uh, we have more than made up for any, uh, funds being lost because we pulled out of Wild Star Two. Um, they both have two different strategies that complement each other. Um, it, it's going well there. We're gonna have another meeting shortly after the, uh, third quarter and should be able to provide some more up to date numbers at that time. Right now we're a little, the numbers aren't exactly, uh, they're from second quarter. So I'll just bring them forward when we, uh, get to, get to that next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I just did forget one thing that I have been debating on whether I should mention, but I think I, I would like to mention it. A former mayor of Casper passed away last week. Um, sad passing. Uh, her name is Judy Laird. The mother of my children.
Thanks for, um, mentioning her, Dallas. When, uh, was she mayor roughly?
Nineteen ninety. Nineteen ninety. She did a great job. Everybody really liked her and.
What were some of her passions?
She was serving the city. She was on the PTA board. She did a lot with the hockey for the youth and uh. On every ladies' board known to man and, and uh, good friend of Susie McMurray among others.
Thank, thanks for mentioning that. I'm sorry for the family's loss. Our airport manager. Uh, said that, this was Friday. That they have had one of the busiest, if not busiest, fire days with constant take tankers. At one time, three single engine air tankers, four four engine large air tankers and one C one thirty. It's been a constant stream of resupplying. Uh, and loading two at a time, launching them and starting with two more and, and probably people have seen. Some of those uh, planes coming in and, and heading out. Uh, there is um. Uh, you know, fairly significant fire in Labonte Canyon. Um. The. Other thing I'll mention. I don't know if you know what SAM, SAMSA is, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Uh, it is suicide prevention month, um. And, and uh, we've, we've lost way too many. By suicide, um. Here in Natrona County over time and it's a really sad situation. Um, last night, uh, Commissioner Mill and I attended the um, Prosper. Uh, community event and Dr. Ken Corso uh, is a nationally known suicidologist. He's one of very few that are actually trained. Um, he's a, an air force, former air force. Um, uh. Person, um, clinical psychologist, um. Hired by the governor, um, essentially uh, through an RFP process to uh, um. Work with, with a few counties in the state, one of which is Natrona County. And um. Anyway, it was informative. They're having an additional training, I believe, in both January and March. Um, and, and we can uh, provide um, dates. You know, some really good takeaways, I think, from that in terms of the things that we can do in terms of how we talk to. Um, people who uh, are, are considering ending their life. Um, and, and so some real good, um, good points. Uh, for, for all of us, and I know all of us. Want to do everything we can individually, but also as a county. And so hopefully, um, you can. I, I picked up some swag last night. Uh, nine eight eight is the suicide crisis lifeline. There's a sticker in here and I, and there's a business uh, card in here and I challenge the commissioners to do what you can with. Uh, I guess best utilizing, you know, where you're going to put the sticker and um, you know. How you're going to maybe keep that bottle. Or where you're going to keep it so that suicide is at the forefront, um, to the extent possible. Um, I've got magnets. I mean, I, I grabbed all kinds of stuff for, for maybe some of our county refrigerators and the break room and. Uh, things like that, but um, anyway, I don't know if y'all had, had questions on, on the event last night. Um, but I, I think that it's a, it's a marathon, not a sprint. Um, in terms of how we talk about it and how we, we uh, increase awareness and reduce suicide. Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, just to segue off yours a little bit or to add a little bit more to, we had a, there was also a speaker. Um, from Casper, from Natrona County.
Sean Moore.
Sean Moore, who did try to kill himself. And he talked about it and talked about the, the process that led him to it and the recovery after. Um, well, there was, there was a lot of. Lot of discussion, a lot of points brought up that. Of, of how we should be discussing this with our kids. We talk to them about gun safety. We talk to them about stranger danger. We talk to them about uh, showing naughty bits to people. We don't talk to them about suicide, about people wanting to kill themselves. And that's another part of the, the, the whole bundle is, is everything's so taboo around it. It, that taboo needs to be broke so that we can have these discussions. We have these discussions with our kids, with our coworkers, with those of our family, with our friends, whoever. A lot of this is just being there for the people. But also to how we talked about suicide itself, about how these people want to kill themselves. Committing a couple of high points where the, the, you know, we, when we talk about we're committing suicide. Well, we commit crimes, we commit people to insane sounds. We commit whatever. It's a bad connotation. We need to be upfront and straight about it. They're killing themselves. That's what they want to do at the time. We need to discuss it as such. Sometimes that is what that person needs to hear about is that we care enough that we're going to rip that Band-Aid off and just talk about it. So if you have the opportunity. For any of you that didn't go or out there in, in TV land, YouTube land. I'd highly recommend going to uh, one of these and uh, hearing about it and discussing it. It'll. If not, open your eyes on some points. It may open your eyes on other points.
There, there are some. Thank you, Commissioner. There are some takeaways, um. Uh, not just how we talk about it and when, you know, we talk to our, we should talk, be talking to our kids about it, uh, at least before the age of ten. Um, but there's some legislative changes um, pertaining to mental health. Um, there are what are called decompression chambers um, that aren't medically staffed. Um, there's basically, um, it's kind of chairs in a room and. Um, you know, at, at, at a, at a uh, funeral yesterday, um. The speaker mentioned, um, I don't know, did any of you go to the funeral at St. Patrick's yesterday? So, um, the speaker mentioned when an earthquake happens, who are the three people you're going to call? And so, you know, my wife and I went to that and we were like, okay, here's who, here's who they'd be. Um, but uh, you know, just, just things like that. So, mental health um, continues to be a big issue, whether we're talking about youth on youth violence, on the culture of violence, where, where, whether we're talking about social media. Um, and its impact on, on youth and adults too, on how many likes, uh. Uh, Commissioner, whomever uh, gets on, on their post. I mean, I think that if you're on social media, you're guilty of it. It's just a matter of, of how guilty and how, how tied to it you are. So we're going to be talking about mental health and health in general at our October first meeting. Um, and uh, um, a number of people are working on that. We'll probably see some, some familiar faces. Uh, there are some RSVPs of some people who are really well connected in the community to uh, kids, um, to uh, mental health. And so, um, anyway, we're putting it together and hopefully we'll have, have, have something, um. Have, have a good presentation. I th- I think we will. We're going to have a memorial hospital board of trustees meeting later this week. Um, it's kind of a, a reorganizational or reformational and we'll um. Report back to you uh, on that. Commissioner Laird, are you going to be able to make that Friday?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. What time is it?
Ten.
Here?
Yep. Okay, um, I don't believe I had anything else. We have, um, I guess one other thing. Uh, the airport has a, um. Extra firefighting vehicle they're, they're going to get rid of. Um, and I think they're willing to offer it to Midwest Edgerton if they can use it. Uh, I'm going to reach out to them. Uh, otherwise it'll go to another uh, airport in the state. Basically, um, there were some grant monies that allow the airport to um, replace an existing. And so this older one, um, doesn't really fit for the airport's purposes anymore, but it'll work real well for, for any number of other folks, so. That's my airport update for now. Um.
Mr. Chairman, you reminded me of something. I got a call from, from a gentleman who watches our meetings. Is one of the donors to the fireplace, by the way. Uh, who tells me, he heard us talking about the lights in this building and he thinks. That the Department of Energy, he's been involved in a couple of situations where the Department of Energy has all this money and has paid for the lighting. So what I'd like to do is have Garrett look into that. Of course, this guy asked me, so we'll turn this over to your uh, person who does these grant writings, but I don't know that we have such a person. But we might consider that because if we can save a lot of money on lighting from federal grants and. Uh, the, possibly even the security equipment that we need here.
So, um, Commissioner Freel, is that in your court or is that in Commissioner North's court on Ashley with sustainable strategies? And, and that, I don't know if it's a monthly phone call?
I've been doing that. I've been on those back then.
Okay.
I'll ask Ashley this weekend, see. Next time we have.
That's, I think we transitioned, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah, we did. And she'd be the grant writer. We need to get that done.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Laird, if, I don't know if you have uh, the specific name of the grant or the program. You can get to Commissioner North. I think it would help Ashley um, kind of focus in on what the, uh, what the opportunity there might be.
I'm sure my friend is watching and so he'll probably call me from Houston.
Okay. Well, great, yeah. If we could get maybe just a little more information, I think sometimes Ashley and her firm are great, but they, I mean, they're great. But sometimes they don't have um, extra bandwidth with all the different um. Agencies here in Natrona County they're, they're working with. Okay, anything else?
Actually, I got two more things.
Great.
Uh, so just update on the columbarium. Uh, city engineers already looked at it. Uh, they uh, are. We're at a point where we're ready to get a bed to get that foundation poured. Once it's poured. Um, I actually put the columbarium people on hold because they were ready to truck it out here. Um, so we're trying to fast track that and get concrete in the ground so that we can get, get them out here and get it set before winter hits. So I'm thinking within the next month, we should be good to go on that. And the second thing, that opioid money, have we decided what we're doing with that and got a plan to move forward?
So there's an old uh, MOU, I think. I don't know if it was signed or was it a, a draft RFP that maybe was, was prepared. And I think that at least um, in some discussions with the health department, you know, there's at least some question of whether some of that. Um, could be maybe be reallocated to maybe a, a mental health opioid component. Not all of it, not the majority of it, but I think there are some conversations about that, that over the next couple of weeks, there's going to be some, some clarity on that. Um, but otherwise I think it's just hanging out there. I'm not sure, Heather.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Freel, there was, um, oh, about a year ago, I think, we, we met with the city um, and discussed a possible RFP. Um, for a provider to put, provide services using that fund, uh, using those funds. Um, we, we've been looking at it um, a little bit recently and uh, the uses. That are permitted under the, the agreement that we're a party to is pretty broad, actually. So there, I, I think that the health department's proposed use of it would be acceptable. Um, and, and certainly if, if we go forward with the city of Casper on this RFP for this program, that would work as well. But there, there could be additional uses for the funds too, and we continue to get the funds in, so. Um, definitely want to get you some information on what's allowed and, and then maybe some proposals as, as to how those funds could be used and, and put to work for people.
Do you know off the top of your head the ballpark amount that's been received to date?
So I know last year we received just over six hundred thousand. Uh, this year, that amount, um, so far. I, I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure exactly. I, I could get that information for you though.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, I think it was, he said the Department of Energy had the grants for the lighting.
Okay. All right, well, um, I think it's. I think it's uh, time to conclude the work session and so we will.